This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll call to the board of the Monterey Select Board March 8th. This is until 2:00 PM and all three members are present here in Town Hall. The first item on our agenda is the Green Park Playground Project. We just heard back today with another quote for the proposal. I may have to mute the call and then I'm free because of background noise. So the three and and a couple of notes before we get into the quotes themselves. Melissa informed me today that Jim said the Highway Department can do the demolition.
Yes.
And disposal, there may be additional costs for the disposal of some of the debris.
Can I just?
Yes, Jerry.
Michelle had made a comment about if Jim does work for us, it's going to cost us. So it's not a free removal and demolition unless you decide it's going to be free. But as far as Michelle had made comments when we talked about this, she said, well, whose budget is that coming from? So just want to let you know.
I guess it would be a question of us ascertaining how many work hours they thought it would require because they they already are paid on salary by the town.
Right, I understand. It's fine with us.
Right, no, I'm just saying from our first, from my perspective, I can't speak for the board as a whole. It would be a question of how many hours would that require? And like what other work is on the table that might not get done? But it's a perfectly valid project for that to be working on itself.
Or you can see how if the town does it, it might be more economical than some of these bids.
Typically, I would say that's likely.
Therefore, we'd like to go down that path.
Yes, I would concur.
So without the demo and disposal, the first one, the first quote that we have is from Miracle for $98,271.23. And then O'Brien and Sons came in at $94,555.14. And today we received Altplay for $85,000.
Yes, can I do something additional that I have?
Yes.
I know it's complicated, but I just started at 4:30. But there is a grant out there called the Park Grant, P A R C, through the state, which will reimburse 52% to 70% of park and outdoor recreation purpose things. We are not eligible right yet because we need to update our open space and recreation plan, which is apparently not the same thing as the master plan. Although when I read it, I just started researching it, when I read it, it sounds exactly like the preliminary master plan that we have. So just throwing that out there that there is a possibility for.
It would be 52% to 70% of costs.
52% to 70%.
Of a grant or of $500,000. But what can you do it for? Developing land and park and outdoor recreation purposes. It is supposed to acquire parkland, build a new park, or renovate an existing park. Wowzer.
So I think.
July 13th of what? So if we could figure out the open space recreation plan, there's a possibility that we may be maybe able to reimburse.
You have to have a.
Yeah, just before any other comments, my general sense was to let the Parks Commission consider the quotes and make a recommendation since it, the Parks Commission has the, is in charge of what happens on the playground. I mean, we have the money and we would have to sign the contract, but I thought that we could hand it back to them and they could make a recommendation based on the proposals. There was public comment. Laurie Shaw.
Yes, Laurie Shaw. Am I correct in remembering that if you're using ARPA funds, you cannot use any other grant funds? I thought I remembered reading that.
I don't remember that. I don't remember that. I was actually just throwing it in there. It's complicated.
I didn't come across that.
That was going against.
Well, it's something to mention.
I can probably help with both issues. I think your ARPA funds can be used because they're federal and of course VCR is state. When we're doing that right now with MVP and the 319 grant. So that's that's one item.
Doing what right now? I'm confused.
Pardon me?
Doing what right now?
The Covert Project is state funded for the final design. And the 319 project is the Hoopai Road project. That's a that's a state's project. So one can be used to match the other.
I see what you're saying.
And I just wanted to point out, Melissa is absolutely right about the fact that we can apply. But I think the master plan would have to be adopted first to make us eligible to apply for the grant. That can be checked out with the state prior to the release of the grant notice.
Right.
So I don't know what the timing is. I thought it was something like this spring that the master plan would be offered. But I think it would have to be adopted first to make the town eligible for that funding.
I think the question that was raised also that Melissa raised was whether or not the master plan is the same as what they're calling an open space plan, that they might not be the same.
I I think it might be.
Okay.
Because from my reading of of the, I guess, the announcement of the different components of the master plan, it does in fact say outdoor recreation and open space plan. So that should meet the standards and that can be checked, you know, with BRPC, Regional Planning Information. So if the town is eligible for it, that would be, you know, a good thing, but that has to be checked out, I think.
Did you have a comment, Scott?
No, no, just listening intently.
Yeah, Tom Mancy.
Tom Mancy, a few points of information. The first quote that was received was part of the ARPA application. And I had a lot to do with that along with my colleagues on the Parks Commission. We didn't really have any figure in mind. What we used to inform the architect was the response to the survey of the parents who responded, what they thought they wanted, and the square footage. And we just said to the architect, go ahead and give us a plan. So none of those equipment items or or gym items or anything that we necessarily had in mind, we led it up to the individual's discretion. Now, Melissa has helped us in in getting some additional bids. And those bids too were based on a lot of what the first rendition or rendering was. So I think it, I think we're not comparing apples to apples here in all three plans. They're different equipment, basically the same design, but they're not getting them all from the same supplier. So the Parks Commission has a lot of work to do if we follow what your thoughts are in in proceeding to make the best decision for the town. So if we can, you know, zero in on a number and ask these people, what's what's the best you could do for this number? That that would be, I think, the intelligent way of going about it.
I I just, I need to say this again because I feel like I've said it a few times and I I feel like it either goes into the, like somehow I'm not communicating or maybe you just disagree, which is, you know, everybody's entitled to their own opinion. But I I maybe I'm wrong, but I spent some time after we originally talked ages ago looking at the website of the company that's the original architect of that design. They have a lot of very varied equipment up there, a lot of different components, some of them individual components, some of them combined components. And I I don't know what your original process was. I know you spent quite a bit of time and you, you know, you found her. You were really happy with her. I feel like it might even be possible in communication with her, working with her, to come up with a design plan that included many of the same, I'll call them functions, but that's not really the right word, right? Like a climbing wall or a slide or whatever that might, it might be possible to have a unit that had multiple things on it. That might not bring the cost down, but imagine a unit that had three or four different things on the same thing, which many playgrounds have, right? I've been to many playgrounds with that kind of unit. And it might, sometimes the same, the single items are cheaper, but a lot of times that's not the case, right? And a one item that had a climbing wall and a slide and, I'm not sure, I'm going to call them monk, you know what, some type of hanging device all on one, might actually cost half the price of the individual item separately. It might not. I don't know. But what I'm asking is if that was ever asked, was there ever a conversation of this does meet all those individual checkboxes? But could we still, is there a way to combine items that would bring the total cost down? And maybe not even, you know, maybe it would use the space differently. I just want to know if you ever even had that conversation or if you think that's a conversation you could possibly have with the.
Well, I think that's a good point. It's certainly one that that we can pursue. But I think I I respect what Cindy said. Cindy, the designer, said in terms of her knowledge of current playground appeal and what kids get into and how children of different ages can enjoy the same playground. If it if it comes to pass that a multi-function unit in the middle, like they have à la McDonald's playgrounds, indoor playgrounds works, and the Parks Commission as a group wants to support that, I'm not against it. I don't have any preconceived notions in my mind based on the playgrounds I played on or my kids and my grandkids played on. I I'm just going on what presented play concepts are.
And I I don't know that I have a preconceived notion either. I'm just wondering what else, whether you explore any other possibilities? And I, it doesn't have to be one, right? What if there were, instead of, I'm making the number up because I don't remember the exact number, instead of 10, seven, because three were combined, but that for all I know could bring the cost down 20 grand? Like, I literally don't know because.
I get your point, and that's the homework that we have to do.
Exactly.
So are we at the point where the Park Commission could, I guess, do any further negotiations with these companies?
Oh, sure.
And I mean, one thing that you have going for you is that if you're discussing with Miracle, you have a similar design offered by Altplay for $13,000.
So demolition, if you look at Miracles, demolition is $19,500.
They give two quotes, one without demolition and one with.
Right.
And the $98,000 is with.
With, so it's it's not a big difference because there's a lot of money in demolition there.
I I misread the the proposals and what is the Miracle quote? Oh, is it?
They're similar. They're similar. We have to take, we have to take trips, field trips, we really do. Because I look at these sketches and they don't thrill me as far as what I think should be strong. They might be very great. They might be strong, but I'd have to see it in person and I want to see the equipment and maybe take a couple of kids with us and see how people, how it functions. So we have, we do, like Tom said, a lot of work to do. We have to take field trips. But we will keep in mind that demolition helps us a lot.
I I didn't realize. I read off a wrong number earlier. I was mistaken.
I love the idea of using test kids.
Yeah, we can take a few. Take Tom's grandchildren with us.
Yeah, they expect to be paid that.
So I mean, is everyone in agreement though that the Park Commission from here on can review the proposals and do any further negotiations as to design and price? And then come back to the select board with the, with an ultimate recommendation? And then in the meantime, Melissa can research the, or further research the the grant?
Do we need, do you guys feel like you need us to give you a target number?
Yes.
Yes, that would help.
That's kind of what I heard earlier.
Yeah.
The timeline might help too, but unless you want to do it.
Well, we don't have to, the money doesn't have to be paid out till sometime in April 25th, right?
No, I mean, we're not in a rush, but we also.
Well, we're up against Susan, Susan and Justin.
For the homework, if we have a timeline, what you guys would like to see in terms, ideally, I mean.
It's your part. I mean, we have jurisdiction over the ARPA funds.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, this, 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 to do that homework, like what, what, what are we agreed on? Kind of a concept of a general timeline? What are we thinking?
I'm going to throw something out there and you guys can, I'll shoot it down. But I would say like in my perfect world, if you guys could have a conversation with one or more of these designers and have some plan, not an ideally like color mockups that would look something like the place would look, right? Because most people, it's hard for them to look at a plan and envision it. But we've all seen plans that were easier to envision than others and they all have 3D modeling programs. It's not, it's not like they don't have those on site. But if if there was possible to bring a few different plans and explain what the, like with a little legend that says what the elements were and put them up at town meetings so people could look at them and give you comments or feedback on which ones they liked, that would be a way to get a lot of public input on on what, and it gives you a target date and a way to get people talking about it and excited about it.
I like, I like everything you said other than town meeting. Just because I think town meeting, we have a whole lot more to deal with than a budget. And if you want, if you're able to, I mean, we already to some degree have three renderings of the playground and designs. But if you, if you feel that those designs, you you want to negotiate something about those designs for the designers before you even present them to the public, or you could say the three right now you like and then, you know, make it available to the public and say, which of these three designs do you prefer?
From the sketches, I find it hard to really picture what this piece of equipment looks like. That's why I want to see some of this equipment in person and see what it looks like rather than say, gee, it looks good on paper and then when you, you know, we order it and then you get it and say, gee, that's not really what I wanted.
Well, I know the the suppliers can provide us with sites where some of this equipment was. We were going to go on a field trip.
Yeah, I'd still like to go.
We'll invite you. Yeah, put your sneakers on.
Pick a weekend.
Yeah, yeah. Principals would prefer it's a weekend because they don't want to, they don't want us.
And we could schedule a meeting, you know, an open meeting. There were several mothers in town that last year showed quite a bit of interest in the whole playground thing. So if we were, we posted a meeting that was dedicated largely to reviewing around that playground. I think people in town that did have an interest to show up and that we brought, you know, all the information we could gather, we probably get somewhere in terms of them coming up with something concrete.
As a point of information, Steve, as part of the survey was, would you be willing to contribute to a meeting and at what time, at what day of the week? I have that data, so we could do that. Another thing that we're up against is Miracle was the first one to give us a quote. They weren't, they weren't necessarily going to hold a price. You know, their equipment price might go up and so may O'Brien from the way I read it. The last one just came through this afternoon, so I I'm not sure if they have a deadline on any price increases that might come through. So it's.
I I hear you and there's always that risk. The flip side is, I'll be honest here, I, I think I've been pretty clear. I I don't like that original plan and I don't think I'm a, right? Like, and maybe I don't have the imagination to see it. And, you know, maybe I'm completely out of step with kids' use of playgrounds, although I I've spent a lot of times in schools and I feel like I have some sense of them. But everybody's aesthetic is different, but I just, I, what I want is I want to be able to look at that 85 grand playground or 75 grand playground or whatever and be like, wow, that is, was an awesome use of our money.
Well, until you see it, I'd appreciate you reserving those comments.
Okay.
Because what you're seeing is a rendition without the actual equipment to scale.
I I would move that the the select board ask the Parks Commission to review the three proposals that have been received. Do any further negotiation, negotiations that they deem fit on the design and price? Seek public input on the designs and and provide a recommendation based on those negotiations and public input to the, to the select board with a soft deadline of two months, subject to change if you, if the Parks Commission deems that more time is necessary or if they're able to complete that in less than two months, but with a rough, rough, soft deadline of two months. And that simultaneously the town administrator explore the grant opportunity.
I'll second that.
Did we come up with a figure that we should, you know, the the more economical.
The more economical, the better, right?
Without skimping and cutting your foot off, right?
I mean, I think that's somewhat up to you all, if you can find a way to cut something off the proposals. The initial range that we had offered the Parks Commission for this project of ARPA funds was the low end was $88,711 and the high end was $98,271.23. But obviously, if you spend less than that at all, all that money can go towards another good use. So.
And we recognized at the time that we wanted to back both that project and the community center project, but we did not have enough money to believe covered both of those projects as presented.
And in some ways, in some ways, actually, we've been presented with cheaper options for the playground because Altplay came in at $85,000 and the low end of the range was $88,711. So if you can be economical, I mean, I think, and then make a, make an offer, make a recommendation to the select board with all of those things in mind.
Theresa.
Sounds good.
Is there any other discussion? All right, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes. And yes, that's unanimous, yes, I think that should, so we'll move forward on the playgrounds. So that's all the Parks Commission business that we had today. But I do know that we have two members or we have the chair of Lake Garfield Working Group here, Steve Snyder, and Dennis Lynch, who is helpful with the Lake Garfield Working Group. So we might take the opportunity to discuss the letter from the Lake Garfield Working Group about milfoil mitigation. And we've actually received two letters, one from Steve Snyder on March 3rd and one yesterday from Dennis Lynch. This is about the dash work, the divers assisted suction harvesting that's been completed this fiscal year, what you're still expecting to complete this fiscal year and your budget request for next year for milfoil mitigation. So it's my understanding that you're requesting $50,000 again for dash. Is that true, Steve?
I don't think I got the dedication.
What's that?
I don't think I got the dedication to that. Did you fold it this morning?
This morning, or March 7th, yesterday. Dennis, do you remember by chance who you sent the email to?
To Melissa.
Okay, I can read Dennis's email. New England Aquatic Services invoiced the town for the fall 2022 dash work totaling $20,025. A remaining balance of $29,175 is planned for completion of spring 2023 within this fiscal year for dash and lake scientists work ordered June 30th, 2023. Also as an update, and in partnership with Monterey, the French Lake Garfield provided more than $16,000 for additional consulting services performed by the lake scientists and additional dash work performed by New England Aquatics during 2022. Point number two is Lake Scientist Hillary Tanyan Gera Wood from Northeast Aquatic Research had provided the attached report. So we got that report. And then point number three is the budget request for $50,000 for next year. And point number four actually is the requesting the creation of a line item or revolving fund budget for fiscal year 2024. So because Melissa pointed out, we have no, we have no related revenue. We can't create a revolving fund. A line item we could explore, but also I think another alternative that has come up now again is the tax district as another way to fund the regular recurring expense.
So how much time did you want to dedicate to this item? Because we could probably do it pretty quickly in my mind anyway.
What do you have quickly to say?
Well, because it's all, this is, this is, nothing's really new about this in the history of it. So it's everything from people that wouldn't spend any of the money at all. And then some, some of us who believe that it's a, it's like, like some of our expenditures in town, like salt and sand for the roads, what, you know, not to push that point too far, but and then, and then so the tax district is actually an issue we can eliminate, I think, right in this meeting because, because that it's conflating a whole nother set of reasoning because the tax district doesn't help us for, for this coming season.
Not this year.
Yes.
Right.
So, so, so basically, and then, and then what we've done in the past is just gone to citizens petition, which we could do again. That that seemed to have worked. I, I'm kind of sitting the fence on all of it because I can understand people that don't want to spend the money. If I were on the finance committee, maybe I would be, I would see that as my job.
Well, so far, surprisingly, there's been no pushback as far as I'm aware.
Yeah, so on, and on the, like, on the side of what we, most of us that look into it, such that it is, it's, you know, it's a, as people would call it, a heuristic judgment about, you know, like reading a garden or something, we don't, we, we can't, we can't put any definite, this is what you get for this amount in in a kind of a mathematical way. That's just, it doesn't work like that. So we're, we've believed that the 50,000 that which comes from our last, our February meeting was, is just an ongoing maintenance that seems to be working to our satisfaction and for people that research it and think that that's, that's a reasonable sum for, for the work that we're, we're trying to achieve and trying to keep kind of a maintenance thing. Because the fear is, again, you could get different people with different opinions, but we rely on people like Hillary now, Ken Wagner in the past, that this is what they do for a living. They study these biological systems of these lakes. So we believe that, that maintaining it at some level is better and cheaper in the long run than just throwing in the towel as an experiment and saying, let's just see what happens with some people that suggested in the past. Let's just skip the dash.
Well, I don't think anyone's saying that this year, but I'm not sure.
So I'm just trying to, I'm just.
We'll see, tell me, but.
I'm just addressing the issue, you know, without getting into the nitty gritty of Hillary's report and all the different arguments that have gone before, just why we're asking for 50,000 as, as I understand, and the Dennis ones that add to that.
No, I think that was pretty good. Just remind the board that any funds that you spend for this project in the lake could be used as a local match and future grants that relate to the lake, as we're doing with the Hoopai Road project.
And I, like, I think that we all understand the, I understand, I can't say for everybody. I I definitely understand the reality of maintenance of that kind being ongoing. Anyone who's tried to maintain any kind of landscape realizes that it's never a one-off. You don't mow, you don't have to mow again, right? Like, if you have a lawn, you know that, right? You don't plant. You don't plant a garden or a planting bed and never have to maintain it. That doesn't happen, right? Because things grow. So I think that ultimately, the question always comes back to like, is the system we're using working well enough? At the moment, it kind of seems to be the only question I think that I've heard raised in the past is the equity of the funding of it. And that's why the tax district issue comes up.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. I mean, and if, I'm not, don't mean to say, let's not talk tax district. It just seems to me it really gets, conflates a different discussion.
Well, I think here's why it's not conflated is if, if the question right now is to make it a line item and leave this a special article, making a line item is kind of submitting to having it regularly be an operating expense in the budget.
Yeah.
Whereas keeping it as a special article leaves it open a little bit more.
Yeah, okay.
In, in reality, you could do one or the other and always go to a tax district.
Yeah.
But if it's in the operating budget, it seems like it's going to be there to stay.
Few tax districts get negative.
I don't know.
Does anybody know?
Yeah. Well, that Kyle would be the best to speak to that. She's, she's, she's gone over that in detail on numerous occasions with us. I think I won't try to fumble through that, but, but yeah, it's, and it's, there again, it's a whole nother different history of a different time involving two different towns.
Yeah.
So. But I, I understand what you, yeah, I understand what you're saying. And, and as I say, I don't really find myself pushing for one thing or another other than kind of relying on the, the science that's behind this and the research and all the work that's formally been done.
Is anyone on the board opposed to leaving in the fifty thousand dollars for milfoil mitigation as a special article?
No.
I'm not opposed.
Okay, then we'll go forward with that unless there's any other discussion on that. Yeah, Dennis.
I was just going to submit that one possible advantage of a line item would be that if the town assumed or decided to go to zero-based budgeting, having it as a line item would get you to that point in the future. Whereas a special article, you would have to do otherwise.
Can you expand on that argument? I just want to understand how.
Cross that bridge when you come to it.
Pardon?
Cross that bridge when you come to it.
I'm just trying to understand how having a line item helps us with zero-based budgeting.
So a line item really puts a project in a certain category. Zero-based budgeting would take that project and compare the current request for budgeting to the past request. It's one step beyond line item. But it's not that easy to do that if you put it into a special article, I think. That could be researched, but that's my understanding, it's a benefit of line item.
Yeah, I mean, the line item, I think the advantage of making a line item was it wouldn't be up in, so much up in the air every year. But.
That's within our purview, right?
What's that?
We can put it, we can make it a line item, that doesn't have to go to town meeting.
What?
Making something a line item.
Actually, and I wondered too, if at some point, if it is a regular recurring expense as much as it is, if we are able to do what we've been doing.
How many years has it been a special?
I think like six or seven.
Right, yeah, but sometimes it has been a citizen's petition, sometimes it's been supported by.
One time it wasn't supported by the select board or the finance committee. It was a citizen's petition, it was somehow on the warrant.
The voters have consistently supported it.
They have, and last year, I remember how much discussion there was last year, annual town meeting, if I'm not mistaken, there was none.
Right.
So there was, everyone agreed to leave it as a special article this year for fifty thousand dollars, at least tentatively. Thanks, Lake Garfield Working Group.
Thank you.
Representatives.
Or just your committee.
We still appreciate it.
Going.
I mean, I do, I.
The next, the next thing we have is the review of the fiscal year twenty-four proposed budget, which we've been doing, we're going to need to review. And in particular, we have the community center operating budget, which has always been part of a revolving fund with Valley Galley. And this year, the proposal is to make operating expenses their own line item of fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars rather than a revolving fund. Mostly not because of what's going on at the community center, but because of what's going on at Valley Galley and needing to spend the Valley Galley revenue to upkeep Valley Galley. That's my understanding. Which is also brought up, and I was working with Melissa this week, on revising the revolving fund table, which we'll need to have a warrant article for because it's actually by law. And.
Within the table?
The.
There's an actual table.
But it's not a revolving fund, okay, thanks.
To say that Valley Galley fund should be spent at Valley Galley. And if we do go forward with putting the community center operations in the budget, they wouldn't be part of a revolving fund at all. So Scott, you had brought this up last week especially.
Well, the only thing I brought up last week was that there seems to now be an operating budget for a center that was originally supposed to be self-sufficient. And that was all my concern, it's just I noticed that where there had never been a line item, now suddenly there is. So it's just looking through the whole thing. And I think the inception of the community center was that it was supposed to be self-sufficient, earn its own wages, earn through operations, we pay for itself.
Were you on the select board at the time?
Yes.
Because I thought that, I have a different memory of the conversations, right? But I wasn't on the select board.
I was on the select board at night. Dennis, did you want to talk?
No, Mick.
Yeah. When the community center started, absolutely nobody knew what was going to be, what was going to go on there, what was going to happen. We just said, well, let's get the building going and see what happens. And I, I've not been a part of it, so I just looked at what's happened there. And it is incredible, the amount of things going on that are for people and helpful to people. They're doing things. It is the greatest thing that's happened in this town now. You know, it's a whole new project, it's something for senior citizens, it's something for kids. There are talks going on, support groups. To think that this is not a part of our budget is, I don't understand that. It is part of our budget and they have to have money to operate because it's a lot of work just putting up the calendar and keeping track of who's, when and where. So I don't, I don't think asking for fourteen thousand dollars is out of line, really true.
And I have to say, I can't, I don't think there's a town that has a community center that doesn't come back to the center. Like I, I've never heard of a community center that operates by charging. I'm sure there are some somewhere, but not in South County, pardon?
Bertrand. But it's nice.
But it's right, it's not, yeah, it's not, they call themselves a community center, but it isn't a community center. But the Lennox Community Center has a huge budget. The Barrington Community Center, like all the community centers where I've talked to their staff, they've got. And let me tell you, their budgets are a lot more than fourteen thousand dollars.
What was, you Jerry Clarking them?
There are certain things in different budgets that don't belong, like things that don't belong in our budget that should be in a community center budget. And one of them happens to be the yoga. We've been, she gets seventy dollars, I think it's a class, and it's about thirty-five hundred dollars, I think, a year. That's added on to our budget that should be in a community center budget because it's part of the community center. And we just brought this up for discussions and now we're getting emails every day that we're cutting out yoga for older people in the community center. So these are things that they should have even more than fourteen thousand, that should go in their budget. Mowing, their yoga and all these things that the community center does. And I think they should have a legitimate budget, a line item budget.
Thank you, I want to, I want to, and you know that next week Connie's looking forward to meeting with you. And you're not going to, no one's going to storm the bastion, don't worry. It's not, it's going to be similar.
We were looking forward to it.
It was a misunderstanding and then everybody thinks we want to cut yoga.
We're going to get back on to the community center budget. Scott, thank you for sharing your concerns with us. I'm going to have Laurie just bring you, this is a piece of the pie. This is a pie of what our budget looked like actually two years ago, but it hasn't grown. We've been, at the revolving fund cap is eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. We've been at that for the last, I believe it's five years. I can't remember the year that Steve Weiss was on with you, I guess, and, and decided to put forth the idea of using the revolving fund. There was a year that we weren't even mentioned, the community center wasn't mentioned on the town warrant. It was just a mistake. I talked to Kenny, he's like, oh, don't worry, it's going to happen. But it would be great to be, just have our own line item, be transparent. And I believe the revolving funds are usually more for saving and more short-term and not meant for this ongoing. But I, I, I just, I feel like if you can also like come and visit sometime and look at the calendar and see what's going on. We started, I think we had four programs the first month, I think. There were four programs, there was like maybe an art class and senior exercise. And I didn't, we didn't have the movie in because no one had donated the TV yet, but we had two other programs. And now there's, every day there's something and a lot of days there's two or three programs. So it's really grown and, but our, the budget hasn't expanded, but the programs have expanded. So that's why we're coming to the town and hoping that we can just be a line item. Thank you.
Dennis.
I was just simply going to say it was a pleasure playing you at Ping Farm, at the community center.
Because it was so easy to beat me.
That's why we should have more of it.
Big chest and heavy day.
Okay, so, but we're, we're all in the same, it was part of the Valley Galley revolving fund and it sounds like the proposal is to change those revolving funds to make the community center operations a line item in the budget. So we will have to amend, if we want to do that, we are going to have to amend the revolving fund bylaw.
What is the revolving fund bylaw currently set?
It has a table of the approved uses of every revolving fund. And the community center and Valley Galley revolving fund, for some reason, or not for some reason, but it was done this way, is one revolving fund. And this, there is a spending limit on the community center and a separate spending limit on Valley Galley. But most of the revenue was coming from Valley Galley and most of the spending was being done by the community center. And now the Valley Galley money is to be spent to upkeep Valley Galley.
I mean, I think that there's upkeep that hasn't been done, that needs to be done. And it makes sense to use the rent from that building to pay for its upkeep. I, I mean, that seems a right order approach. I'm just going to grant a couple of things, what you can spend the money on. Gotcha.
Yeah, so maybe next week or in a couple of weeks, we'll go over that revolving fund. And then the only question was what will we do with the revenue from the community center? Should we make its own revolving fund? It doesn't, it's only about a thousand dollars a year, I believe.
Yeah, this year's probably be about fourteen hundred.
So it's.
The year just before the pandemic was almost two thousand.
So it's going to be a thousand to two thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
And should that? It may be, but that's roughly what it's going to be. So the question is, if we don't make its own separate revolving fund, those funds, I believe, will just go into the general fund, become free cash. If, if we were to make a separate revolving fund for the community center, what would that look like? Where we get spent regularly, but not, and not build up and be not used, but actually be able to go towards something.
Funny you should bring that up because we're going to be talking in our next portion with you about ever going to be looking at long range planning and some capital expenses that might come up because of the ARPA projects.
Yeah, but what can you do with one thousand, two thousand dollars a year is the question. What, what, I mean, that's part of the long range planning, but it's part of the building, so it's needed.
Or use it for their operating budget to defer, they know what's in their bank, use it to defer their budget.
So the two limits you just have to come up with is what is the maximum limit that it can build to? And what is the annual spending limit? So you wouldn't want to set too high of a maximum limit where it builds up and never gets used. So we have to think about, those are all questions we need to think about, whether we work on a revolving fund.
And we have to set up the allowable expenses.
Yes, what it can, what it can be used for.
I would imagine it was mirrors, the one that we currently use from Valley Galley.
It's allowable uses.
Yeah, yes. It's, it would be repaired or general maintenance.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can make it what we want, the refrigerator dies, there's things like that.
Is there a reason, is it for operating expenses? Is that forbidden?
No, I don't think so. Hopefully, the operating expense will be taken care of through the warrant.
Right, I see.
That's funds that go towards the unperceived.
Okay, that's fair, right, yeah, you know, like replacing something that broke.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll work on that.
Be determined.
Right.
We'll work on that, but I think we all know now why it's showing up as a new line. The other thing, what we have, the community center representatives here is the Pavilion Project. So my, my understanding generally is that the variance for the plumbing state board is currently being worked on and we won't know for a few weeks.
Right, the plumbing commissioners for the state meet in the beginning of the month, once a month. And there's a bit of paperwork we have to get together before then. Where Dawn's advising us and guiding us about what we need. And it's quite a bit of paperwork. We're hoping to get letters, we're going to get a letter from him and the Board of Health. And I'm not sure about the plumbing inspector for the town, but we also have a, have a proof now of data that our flow, of our flow meter is only ten gallons a day. So we're, we're getting information that we can share with, with the state plumbing inspectors. And we have to spend a check for eighty-six dollars. That might be impossible.
So the other thing that's new addition to plumbing variance is the parking code and parking variance. So I saw on the planning board agenda that the community center is applying for parking variance.
We are, and we, we know that someday we may be able to improve on the parking. But if we, we had heard from Melissa and Dawn that we may need this year for the tent to have the parking more spaces or more, so some improvement. And so we don't have any money in the budget for this year for that. And I don't expect anyone to just drop us money for the parking right now. And we're hoping to have the tent in June, so, which is coming up fast. So what we're doing is, I'm on the planning board Thursday night, talked to them about getting what they call a relief, relief from the permit. Are you familiar with that, Scott?
Relief?
Yeah.
From a permit? I understand what you're asking for. I'm not so certain that you'll be granted it, but I think certainly you got to ask.
Right, we, with, at WMH in two thousand and ten, met with Maynard and John Silbert was involved and they, and Joe Baker had studied what the regulations were for parking for the occupancy for the house, what they thought it was going to be. And, you know, they came up with a figure that involved, I guess, about eighteen spaces. And I saw Joe's hand-drawn rendering of what the parking could be like, but they chose not to do that, Maynard and John decided that wasn't really going to be needed. So they did do a driveway and there's some handicap parking, but we never got the spots that Joe had configured in, so. Did you see anything else, Melissa, about that? Yeah, I mean, you were looking, you said you talked to Sean.
Or did they find any more documents?
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you for looking. So that's what we have, that Melissa shared with me, the sketch that Joe had done. And Joe said he just, he remembers that they asked to be in code, at WMH, you know, which became the community center, right? Or started the community center, asked to be in compliance with the regs. And, but at that time, they just didn't think that the community center was going to be busy and take off. So I understand how it happened.
And I think we were told that if we needed.
And I think we were told that if we needed more parking, it would be provided. But we were, we were pretty shocked at the time when we asked for the parking spaces and we got just a tiny little bit. And I, I believe that we were said, well, we were told, yes, if, you know, if you need more, we'll, we'll provide it. And now we need it, unless we get a variance.
Right, but, but, I mean, we, I'm not against working it into the long-range plan, like a five-year plan. Dawn wants us to work up a five-year plan.
Well, you had just mentioned prior to all of this that you wanted to bend our ear on, on just that.
Right.
So would it make sense to hear all of that first and then start putting things in chronological order? And see what the overall is?
Sure, yeah.
Because it sounds to me like what you've got brewing
Right.
is capital planning
Right.
that needs to be addressed and then put onto that category of down the road.
Right, right. Michelle Miller's been asking us to do something like that. And Laurie and I are supposed to meet at the finance committee, I think, when she's back. We've had, you know, the planning board obviously is excited about the community center and they wanna know what we're thinking about. And who else? Well, Don Chirico. So everyone wants to know what we're, what we're doing. And it's, it's revolving around the, the pavilion. I mean, that's what's getting, moving us forward with the impetus to improve the parking. And yes, get a toilet, an additional toilet, so.
And would that toilet be inside the building? Or is that a small addition to be, to be added on?
It would have to be added on to the.
To house that new.
Yeah, so it would share the existing plumbing.
We're, we're hoping with the variance that if we can ask the state to give us five years to build an addition to put the bathroom on and in the meantime to use porta potties. So we're hoping that they will go along with that, which would give us two bathrooms during the season that it's used. I mean, we wouldn't need one, you know, right now unless there was a special event and then we would certainly get one. But we're hoping that we could convince them that because it's, the pavilion is a very seasonal use for the most part, that the porta potties would, would serve the purpose. There apparently is no way of getting around the plumbing code of getting another bathroom. We know we have to get another bathroom at some point. There's no place in the building to put a bathroom. We would have to put an addition onto the building. So in terms of capital planning, we were hoping that maybe the town could put aside money every year over a period of five years that would be in a fund to build the bathroom. So we would have something to, to build the bathroom with after, after five years, if in fact we got that, that variance.
Well, there's your revolving fund. Also fourteen hundred.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna get us, I don't even buy the toilet, right.
I wonder too if it doesn't make more sense to, if you're gonna set aside some money each year and then save to buy it,
Right.
build it and then pay off a loan. That way you have it while you're paying it off instead of saving up to.
Yeah, it's five years from now. Something that costs a hundred could be a hundred and a quarter.
I'm also gonna throw out there the question of, is there any grant money we can get for them?
I haven't looked up grant money for toilets, but it could be. I mean, it's infrastructure.
For a public recreation facility? I don't think it is a toilet, think of it as a necessary capital addition to a public recreational facility.
That serves seniors.
Did you like?
Serves seniors, exactly, in an aging community.
Dennis.
Actually, it's, it's similar to the Parks Commission effort. And again, let, you know, the idea of the open space and recreation plan being approved by the town should set the stage to get funding for that project as well as the Parks Commission party. I just wanted to mention, if I understand you correctly, Scott, the, were you suggesting going for the bathroom now and taking that money out of the ARPA funds?
Uh, no, I, I'm not opposed to such an idea, but that never crossed thy lips.
Okay, because I was.
I'm not certain how you got that.
Yeah, yeah, maybe it's my misinterpretation, but the whole idea would be to go for the variance first, keep the ARPA funds secure until they find out what the answer is on the variance.
And, and just for clarity, I don't think there's the pocket there to support that addition. Unless it, unless the rest of the project came in well below what things.
Exactly.
Like there's a limit to the amount of money we have.
Right, right.
That's right, yeah.
I think what it sounds like is when the community center was starting to become a public building, certain things were looked over, like parking and bathroom and, and lighting. And now we're dealing with those shortfalls. So maybe a long-term plan on how to deal with those and how to fund those improvements is in order.
Yeah, it all runs hand-in-hand with the town hall plan. Because here we have a building that we know the use that it gets and what its detriment are at town halls. And we need to make certain that this building is maintained. All of our town buildings need to be maintained, but I, I think this building takes some priority of our capital planning to at least make certain that we don't let this get overshadowed by the other things that are drawing funds. I'm, I'm not saying that, just make certain that we don't forget the town hall needs, needs work.
I think that it's always really hard, renovation of existing facilities, whatever they are. Like people are more willing to pay for a new bridge than to fix the existing bridge, right? This is a nationwide issue. It's not just.
Same way with vehicles, you know, people just assume go buy a new vehicle.
And, and so we want to give a bunch of money because the bridge will be named after them or whatever, so. Which it doesn't mean you shouldn't maintain your existing buildings.
Well, we have, the, the town, from what I see, looking through this, in the next few years, there's some serious things coming our way. And there's gonna be, there's gonna be some, some, some shortfalls. I just don't see, you know, you can't create revenue without.
Short-term.
You know? So there's, there's, there's a lot coming up.
Yep.
And, you know, there's, the wishlist always grows, but the one thing that doesn't grow is the amount of money to pull from the pot. So it's just, it's just gonna become interesting. I mean, and the whole freaking country is messed up, so. To think that we are not in the same boat is crazy to some degree.
So as far as the project in particular, the pavilion project in particular, we'll wait to hear about the plumbing variance and the parking relief.
It seems like that's the way to run. You're planning on using a tent this year?
Yeah.
Right, same, same as you did last year? And that's been procured?
Well, Melissa, can we talk about that tomorrow? Because you were looking at the hayway.
Yeah, since you all the points.
Yeah.
So it's, it's in the works to have that.
Yeah, let's talk about that, yeah.
Okay, so that takes care of the community center for tonight, I think, unless there's any remaining question.
I don't know anything else. If there's some kind of template you want us to be looking at, we have our, tomorrow we have our community center committee beginning. If there's something you want us to be looking at, to be thinking about, the long-range planning. But there's no other, there are no surprises. There's no, you heard the whole, the whole kit and caboodle.
Well, when you add a bathroom, you know, that's the time you're putting an addition in. It's time to, if you're gonna expand, expand, make something else happen with just a small little bathroom that's six foot by eight feet, you know? Because right now, what do you have? A hot plate and a sink, right, for a closet kitchen?
Yeah, just a kitchen out the middle.
I'm not saying go, you know, run with it because I just said that things are tight. But you have, I mean, that's part of planning. I mean, I dream all the time. Doesn't mean my house is any bigger than it was twenty-nine years ago. But boy, in my mind, if I had the money and the time, it would have been totally different. But I plan and each year I look at the plan and I always see it a little more gray. And it's just like, jeez, I just don't have the energy to do that this year. So, but at least I had a plan, you know, you'd say I did. So plan, 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 plan.
Thank you.
Because every, every time you put, you know, you pin the paper, you get the, now you have the bump out, which is the bathroom. Then you say, oh, jeez, if we went six more feet, we could extend this, this kitchen. We're not that much more. And what would that do for you? Parking, you say you were granted parking. I'm still not certain who granted such things? And where were they gonna pull it out of? I mean, where is the parking gonna come from? If you do keep expanding, where's it coming from? Is there any concern as to where we're pulling this parking lot from? The garden? I'm just, I'm not against or for or anything. I'm just like, where, where are we parking? You have to add more parking. Man, just pull in and take a left or take a right and there you go and park. I don't need somebody to say, this is your official parking area. You know, we grew up here in the woods. Park where you can park. But if they have to be official parking, then I don't know where you're gonna get official parking.
So it sounds like you wanna go to me Thursday night and support the relief.
I'll go anywhere, just not at night. I, I can't stand night means. I never have.
I'll write up something, get your signature on it.
Sure, I'm, I'm totally for it. Totally for everything that Monterey has needs and wants. Don't ever think that I'm sitting here like, you know, not wishing you guys the best. I do.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
All of, you know, parks, the lake, everything. I think it's, this is what makes Monterey so cool, so.
Thank you.
Continuing on with budget review and town hall. One thing that I'm wondering is, number one for budget review? Yeah, sorry, I can't remember.
Number one?
Number one, yeah, wait, wait, number one, hold on. Thanks, guys. Thank you for coming and being patient and listening and offering your opinion.
So the, the one thing that I'm wondering is, speaking of building maintenance, so I walked around town hall with Melissa earlier this week. And it's become apparent that roof, the roof, now roof is a big issue. And the siding, maybe some of it repaired, all of it painted. And I was wondering if we might just do that this year? Or consider doing that this year? Let's do it here. Budget it in this budget. I mean, I don't, I don't think that we need, I mean, I guess we could have a roof inspector or a contractor inspecting the roof, but if there's other things coming down the pipeline and those are routine maintenance that are due, then we could get ahead of the game and just do them.
So my only question would be, as I raised before, is that if we did these barriers, they would be able to save.
Well, I think we talked about repeating the whole building, right?
Right, so say they say we're gonna add on, like, is it gonna be?
So my comment would be, yes, but it depends on the state of the roof and the state of the siding, right? Because even if we're gonna add on, by the time we come up with a plan and execute planning, it could be long enough that if there's damage to the roof, we could do damage to the building. So there's always that trade-off between the amount of urgency and I'm saying I don't know what the urgency is.
Right, I think part of that is ability to be telling us about the urgency and so. And it's kind of like their project, you do all these additions and then find out if you can spare a driveway and it goes right where the addition is supposed to go, you know, I mean, like, I think you need to have a big plan and say. And, and again, it comes here with a play down too, you know, like, if they say we gotta go get back and you put the, you know, like.
But if the elevator could go up and you could have a second floor, if you wanna replace your roof and then.
Well, maybe, maybe I was mistaken, but the sense that I got from the walkthrough was that those were priorities. HVAC or heating and cooling and lighting on that side of the building were priorities. And then as far as space went, it seemed like the big thing would be finishing the basement.
And I think part of that might be lifting us up a little bit as you saw about the, I mean, that, that might be a solution. I don't know, I'm not a contractor, but if it's leaking there and we've been told that the foundation needs work, I mean, that could be part of the solutions. And maybe this part of the building has to come up a little bit and the foundation we dug, but so if you, I don't know, does that affect? What would we do in town hall while you're in?
I think actually, I got a friend who lived in a house that I thought was.
Jeez, everything just goes slowly up. Um, it's a really good question.
I just would hate to put good money after bad. If they, like you said, you do the roof and then you find out that, hey, you know, the second story in the elevator can go up and now you gotta tear that all up, so it kinda seems like a waste of money.
Well, I guess my sense, what I'm saying is that it seems like those, it seemed like we could probably work within the existing space. That's what I got. And then the one thing seemed to be finishing the basement.
Yes, but determining what it should be used for. They've got their wish list.
I just, it's like by the time you do a study, do we need someone to do a study to tell us that the roof needs to be replaced or that we need to repaint? Can we just go ahead and do those maintenance items? That was my defense.
Do you have anything on this one?
What has been the request of different offices in town hall? What is?
Lots of stuff. We don't have to pay places to feed people. We don't have places to go record. We're just customizing scenes. The place department would, you know, their wishlist is to go into the basement and open up their office for, you know, we have wish lists for, to have a little place where employees can eat their lunch. They cook their lunch, not festered with mice and mold and. So I, I don't, I don't know, I, I guess I would want you to talk to Jim as well because he is the director of operations for buildings. So maybe he has, you know, priority lists.
Has any, when was, like, how, how did you do it?
Did the roof any fixes?
I'm not saying.
Jim did an engine. So I can't remember how many years ago was it, you might have been on the board at the time. I think we did that after the roof, because there was something wrong. I don't know why we did.
Yeah, there was some roofers doing one section of the building only at the time.
Right. I don't know why we did it in hand.
Well, if there's a, sometimes you just fix the problem that exists.
Yeah.
Because the other front side is okay for whatever.
Especially a roof.
Yeah. How do we, I feel like we need a little more information. I'd like, I'm not opposed to fixing stuff. Like, I totally agree, regular maintenance is an important thing and putting money in the budget for the maintenance is a good idea. I'm just trying to, I feel like I don't have information I need to make a fully informed decision about what the trade-offs are, what the amount of money we're talking is, what the urgency on the various things is, like, it's hard for me to make a call without that information. I'm just trying to establish what information we need and where we would get it.
If we are trying to go through the channels that be, it lends itself to ask Mr. Hunt to give us his professional opinion on the matters of urgency and when should they be taken care of.
Right.
I mean, that kinda makes sense because like you say, you're not an expert. I mean, I could go up on the roof with a ladder and walk around and say, yep, you know, you've got two more years left. You don't have anybody walk around on it. Because that's the last thing you wanna do.
Right, right.
Roofs themselves, even though they may look brittle and shot, they could still last and shed water almost indefinitely. And actually roofs shed water with shingles missing. You wonder how the heck does that happen? So I'm not trying to say that it doesn't need maintenance. I'm sure it does. I think that the maintenance that you would spend, if you're talking about a whole paint job, man, half of this roof, you're probably gonna be looking at seventy-five to eighty grand. You know, I mean, think about painting a house. How much that cost? You're gonna probably be looking at fifty grand.
It's just hours, stack hours.
Yeah, it's just like.
The paint's bad enough, but it's the labor.
I mean, well, paint now is sixty-two dollars an ounce, if you can believe that. And that may not even be correct today.
Right.
So paint's outrageous. Then of course your labor, you're probably looking at, well, it's gotta be minimum going rate, right? So prevailing wage, so you're gonna be looking at anyway, I mean. So prevailing wage, so you're gonna be looking at anyway, I mean. Contractors charge more than that, I mean, what, Jay Ambon or something will charge an hour, but if it's gonna be prevailing wage, it's what, forty-five?
Owner operators don't need to charge.
If it's a, if it's a single, it's just Jay and his employees.
Yeah, so then he could just charge what he wants to for the building. So, I mean, we look around, we get, we get a price and that's what you do, but I would imagine that we ought to be looking at, I could only assume eighty grand. You know, somewhere for that to get a decent job and that may include, you know, some replacement of clapboards if they're bad. I would say that, you know, if I was doing your shingles and I was doing the roof job, I would put a clause in that for every sheet of plywood that I have to replace and remove, it's X dollars per sheet. You know, I already have the shingles covered for so many square, ice and water shield, drip edge, drip cap. Roof peak cap, et cetera, et cetera. So that's gonna be spelled right out and they may go up and say, it's just this one side that needs it. This is my quote, there's plenty of contractors that'll give us that. So if that's the roof you'd like to look at just to get the maintenance of it done, then that kinda covers us from immediate damage to the building. Kind of like band-aiding the building. But if we're gonna eventually have an office that, with a doorway or something leading out to another building, not a building, an addition off of this one to some degree, you know? I still don't see that considering we're just now talking about it taking place for at least three years before shovel was in the ground. So we've got time to build on that, providing we make certain we feed the stabilization fund. I mean, that's the way it's done, I mean, if we're gonna approve any money for the feasibility study, that's up to figuring out. Who's doing it and what they're gonna give us. Be really interesting to have them come in and say, this is what we're gonna do. Because to me, it seems like an awful lot of money. To have a, to tell us that you need an addition out here that's gonna have three rooms and a hallway and two access points. Okay? Couldn't we come up with that ourselves? No?
Well, not everyone's a builder.
Well, I know, but I mean, Jim, Jim understands what the building aspect of it, you understand what the needs of the building are, you've got other. Offices in here that are saying, I could use ten more square feet, I could use, you know, a place for twenty-five filing cabinets. So all of that kinda gets taken into consideration and the addition grows.
I think the tricky part comes in like how to get that addition in on the space that we have, I don't think we can go that way substantively because of the water.
No, I think you can.
Really?
I don't, water doesn't stop anybody, build in the water.
There's a setback, yeah, there's a setback from waterway.
We get, we just hit the barriers.
Just make it the concom office.
I mean, I'm not saying we're gonna go right up to the river, but if we only went fifteen to twenty feet from here, there's gotta be some methodology that we can put a foundation in the ground with twenty-five more feet to the water's edge, I would think.
I don't know what the, I, I'd have to look at what the distance from the water is and what the setback is, but right.
So I don't wanna get too far in that, I'm just throwing out there, maybe we should. Figure out if we should deal with some of these routine maintenance items, just to have them done.
They should be done when they're needed.
Because studying takes time and then. You get a plan and then you act, but if probably someone could go up there and in a few minutes tell us if we need roof, need a new roof. If I'm not mistaken. So, and then maybe give us a quote and probably a bunch of other people could give us quotes.
Well, the first thing you do is you don't want the roofer to go up and tell you if you need a roof.
Cause they'll say you need the whole roof.
Yeah, so you want somebody to go up there and look at it that can actually say yay, nay, objectively. And then when you have that little bit of information, we only need this section done, then you're getting your roof course.
When we get to do that, that's not a roofer, it's cause they're gonna want the job, like, how do you find?
Director of operations, I mean, if he's not qualified for that, then he has to figure out who, I mean, really what it's gonna do, you're gonna look at your roof. Is it there? Yeah, are there pieces missing? No, are there nails showing? No, is it curled like an old toe? No, you know, what's going on up there?
Or also is it leaky?
Number one, if there are leaks, then I'll say you got a huge event, so that's the thing. I mean, I could only assume Jim could certainly go up and look at a roof and determine.
Yeah, so I think the urgency of the roof and what its condition is and what we need to be replaced and then if it would need a quote on that. And maybe a similar assessment of what portion of siding needs immediate attention.
And maybe quotes on painting too.
I mean, if we have a quote on painting, we can choose to do it or not.
Exactly, no, I would say that's what you need to do to figure this out is to get, get dollar values better for.
And, and you're not wrong, I think we need a longer planning as well and we don't wanna over invest in things that might be undoing, but we also need to protect the value of the building, so it's not an easy order.
I mean, there may be, we may not have to do anything on the roof.
Yeah.
But it'd be good to know.
It would.
And yeah, just to take.
Care of it, and my take on the basement becoming viable, that's a lot of work. Because the foundation is your issue.
And, and the moisture is gonna be a continuous problem unless you repair that issue.
Mm-hmm. So there's remediation that could be done along the perimeter of the building, but it's a complete out dig. Waterproofing of the existing building, maybe even putting in some type of hydrostatic pumps and collection areas under the ground. Where water comes up, it pools into a pump, pump takes it away, puts it. In the river again, I guess, or puts it wherever it puts.
Rains it away.
Yeah, just takes it south. So, you know, to fix the basement issue, that's a bit of work, cause it's a perimeter thing that's the problem.
The water coming in, yeah, the water's coming in from outside and from underneath.
Yeah, it's coming from underneath.
But ultimately, if we don't do that, I mean, even if we weren't, let's say we chose to leave the building as it is. That is gonna continue to cause a problem for the building eventually upward as well, isn't it? Like if you have a wet basement, that mold problem perpetuates, doesn't it?
Uh, it, it does, but what you do is then you create what's called an envelope of the first of the basement, becomes its own envelope. And that's done through like high density foam insulation spray where, and then that's encapsulated with like a fire retardant paint. And basically, if you have a, you go through the entire process and you create an area that gets nothing in it. It's like dead space, you don't even open windows into it, it's just done, you can condition it. And then that's the end of that problem, you don't use that space, but it's not affecting here, anything that's in that air.
But what about all the heat, all the utilities that are, that run through there?
Well, that's the problem.
Service them, I mean, that's not very practical.
It's not practical, but that's what you're trying to do is to, is to keep a building from here up, so it's this floor that gets totally changed on the underside of this.
I know, but I'm just trying to think what, all the things that are down there that run the building, the furnace, et cetera, we then have to move those, it might be just. The same cost as redoing the basement, right? I mean.
So I guess, not, not to get too, not to get too deep into it, but maybe we'll, maybe we'll get a look at the, at, at the roof as far as immediate maintenance and, and deciding.
Yep.
Debt service forecast, so we haven't heard back from Unibank?
From next week, maybe?
But we did have the update about the tandem axle money.
Oh, yes, that's kind of, the treasurer didn't put it in writing, but I did clarify, um, with the fifty thousand in free cash that David kept mentioning when he was on the call there. Apparently there was some misunderstanding when the payment was made on the tandem axle loan in November and fifty thousand that was appropriated, fifty-one-nine, I think it is, was not put towards the loan. And only the amount of money that we had extra for, to borrow, explain this to you.
The twenty-nine?
Right, the twenty-nine thousand, only that was applied to the loan, so there is fifty-one thousand that we have still sitting, um, available right now. We can't, it's in the, the debt service line item.
Okay.
We can't apply it to the loan because the loans are even renewed for the one-year note, but the treasurer and I are gonna talk to the accountant next week about encumbering those funds. Instead of giving them back to free cash and then doing another article to see if, if that'll work, so.
Right, so this is the same money we're up at there, right?
And then we'll just make that payment.
So if they were in, just to clarify, if they were in covered months, right, if they were encumbered, we could then use them for that originally intended purpose when the loan renews.
If she says no, then it will go back to free cash, then just what David.
Right, okay.
But it wouldn't be available on free cash until.
May of, may of twenty-four, well, not technically, but.
Usually it's certified sometime in October and fall.
So, but can we look into. Why that fifty-one thousand seven hundred wasn't applied toward the tandem axle, does the treasurer know?
So the way she explained it to me, it sounded like it was a miscommunication, I haven't gotten it totally clear of whether it was. A miscommunication when we were talking about the monies that weren't used for the permission to borrow, I don't remember what the amount was, but say it was two hundred thousand and Jim only used a hundred and seventy.
Yeah.
So.
Roughly, that's really.
I don't know if she got confused when we started talking about that and thought we only wanted to put that as a pay down.
But doesn't she get the town meeting warrant and minutes? Because I remember that discussion and I think we all looked at it too, it was the municipal bid sheet and the only app, the only applied funds were the roughly thirty thousand, it was twenty-nine something. Um, but. The fifty-one thousand seven hundred was on the warrant and minutes as being approved toward, to go toward the tandem axle. And it's a problem that it wasn't put towards it.
So looking at the budget sheet, I, this was something that I got confused about when I was looking at the minutes as well. FY twenty-three tandem axle to replace Kenworth is at zero.
It's a special article, don't worry about that, that was the year that it was voted on, but go up to debt service. So, right there.
Okay.
And last year we voted fifty-one thousand seven hundred and then it sat, and so I don't know how much additional interest, but I imagine it's. Amount of additional interest that we're going to be paying this year because we didn't pay that money.
Well, he's saying that this year we owe six thousand eight hundred and fifteen.
Yeah.
In interest.
In interest of that money.
In interest, but that's our minimum payment. Right, and I'm assuming that other amount, the fifty-one seven would have paid down the principal as well, right?
It would have paid down the principal and it probably would have made this year's interest less.
It would.
So.
But let's at least try and get that next year's interest, but buying that money later.
I think that we should continue on this year as though the fifty-one seven had been paid in the sense that, let's try and do another.
Pay.
Payment on the principal.
So we'll need a couple fifty thousand back in there?
I would, yeah, and then we should have made a real dent in the hundred and seventy if we did fifty-one seven last year and then. Fifty thousand this year.
It's still owed on it?
That's all, that's all that's paid, I mean, we just got the truck last year.
Right, and the total for the truck?
It was a hundred and seven.
Okay, so all this that paid is the extra thirty, but we borrowed two and she put the thirty.
She put the thirty against it.
Right.
But forgot to put the fifty-one thousand dollars, fifty-one seven towards it as well. Gotcha.
So you're saying that's like eighty of a hundred and seventy?
It's like fifty-one seven of a hundred and seventy.
Well, what about?
Thirty, the thirty was kind of like that library loan thing where it was money that we requested to borrow, but authorized, never spent, never borrowed.
Right?
Yep.
Well, no, I think it was borrowed, the two hundred was borrowed, we didn't use it, so.
I thought it was off.
I get confused.
The library one was off the, right, it was authorized to borrow, but I believe because of the timing of the truck, when they took the loan out, they took it out for two hundred. Jim never, but sometimes he uses the outfitting money afterwards, like after he's already got in the truck and he didn't end up needing it, so thirty thousand twenty-nine, whatever. Went back, so she just used that as the payment.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think there was just a lot of confusing things that happened with that one.
Yeah. Mickey, did you have something?
Yeah, so the truck was not two hundred thousand, it was a hundred and seventy, random numbers, okay.
And that thirty got accurately applied against the two hundred.
Just deducted, it deducted the loan that you didn't need that loan amount, but you didn't make a payment, okay.
Okay, but, and we have to wait for Unibank to really discuss that more next, next week. We do have a lot of space left on the agenda, but a lot of them are actually quiet.
Oh, the bylaws.
So the noise bylaw, I looked at town council's revisions and I didn't have any, I thought they were all fine.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I was, I thought we, like, examples were what we're looking for, but I looked at the wrong thing.
No. They said, they said, sorry, then let's do it next week, cause they actually marked up the copy that we had worked on, did I not send it?
What I printed up is, is a copy for us in there? I just saw that.
No, there's a separate email that I thought I forwarded, but.
The same thing, we might have, but I might have.
No. The problem is.
Yeah, I thought this superseded.
They asked me if, I wanted examples and I said, if you think it'll be helpful, share the time. But then what I realized is they're all organized so differently, I think we should just stick with the one that we have.
I, I will say this, the, the one on here is, oh my god, no, Hannover, like, it's awful.
Yeah.
Um, the very last one also is so brief, it's useless, however, um, I did think that, and actually. The last one, Shootsberry is not helpful. The Plymouth one is certainly short and sweet, but also somewhat confusing. Of all of those, I thought the most, the one that might be the most useful to us would be that Hamilton one, it's a little, like, it's a little bit lighter than I think it needs to be. But I did kinda like the hundred and fifty foot concept. Um, and to some degree, I, I'd have to compare it to yours, but I did kind of like the idea that, look, if you can stand. A hundred feet from something and you just, and like hear it clearly, it's too loud if it's after nine PM. Um, I, I thought that that gets around the whole decibel issue. Um, it basically says like, you shouldn't be making noise that loud after nine PM, so.
Yeah.
Um, which I thought was kind of a.
So you liked Hamilton?
Of the other ones here, I like Hamilton, I didn't do a direct comparison of that to the one we, we got back.
So what if we work off of the one that we got back and see if we can add in the.
Some of that stuff?
The, some of the Hamilton one and I can do that, and I'm sorry about the confusion, I thought.
It might be my bad.
I thought, well, I think I just sent it along without explaining it.
Right.
Get it written, will you?
Um, I thought we would mostly work off the one that we had worked.
Things were just new, so I was like, oh, I guess I should look at it.
Yeah, I kinda regretted asking for your, getting examples, because there's just so many different ways to structure it and. But I wanted to see if there's anything interesting to take away from it and then a hundred and fifty foot baseline might make lots of sense. We'll have to come back, we'll come back to that.
And they had something in there about permitting and, and I actually didn't even disagree with how they were structuring the fee structure.
Yeah.
But like the half hour, I'll be honest, I like.
Well, and we have, we have the same, we have the same exact thing.
Yeah.
So they must have unpacked it. Well, I won't blow that up. Uh, yeah, we had the same thing about half hour.
Right, no, yeah.
So the private ways that are problematic, I reached out to Brian and Sean, heard back from Brian. And he said that he's only had two problems that he can recall where a road was impassable, and one was Barretown Mountain Road, so that's just our problem and that's being resolved. And then the other one was one time he said Stevens Lake Road or Way was not sanded and it was icy.
Did you get anything back from Jim about problems that they had? Oh, I'm sorry, Sean?
No, I did not, but, and then Brian's other point was that they always try and get wherever the call may be and if that's on foot, it's on. No, I did not. But, and then Brian's other point was that they always try and get wherever the call may be, and if that's on foot, it's on foot. I think all things considered. It's kind of an. I, I don't really know what to think. It'd be nice, it'd be nice if the roads were always such that emergency vehicles could travel on them, but what? What should we do when they're not? I mean, and it's also a very different thing to have trees overgrowing and steep hills. That don't get plowed and you have to go through very back roads, like down on the east end of Lake Garfield. That's a very different thing from an i- an ice storm. I don't know how long it had been since the ice storm and, and, and the way wasn't. Salted or sanded properly, but maybe it was, the ice storm had just happened. I don't know, it's hard to say. It seems like less of a, less of a systematic problem.
Then that result being, this might be a non-issue that we should just not worry about? I, I just wanna.
It's not a non-issue, but what realistically can we do when it's private property owners can do what they want on it? If our emergency vehicles can't travel on those roads, it's only gonna delay the response time for the people on them. And that's up to their, up to them.
I mean, I, I guess though. Were you about to say something?
No, just coffee.
I, I think, I don't know, there, you're right. Perhaps I completely can't do anything, but I, I do feel like. A reminder to the individuals on those roads. That, um, the town wishes to remind you that the maintenance of private ways is up to the individuals who live on the private way. But please understand that when the, but, you know, your failure to do that could impact you directly in this way. By re- impeding the ability of emergency services to reach you in a timely manner. Fire and, and other emergency, and ambulance and other emergency personnel and, um. You know, that, that, the town may be put in a position should. The, your failure to maintain the road caused damage to public ways. The town may be required to.
Or public vehicle.
Pardon?
Or a vehicle.
Right.
Put together a paragraph. We should look at it and then send it to Donna to make certain that whatever we're saying doesn't create a liability for us. And that if it explains. Exactly what we're trying to explain to these people that have private ways. Then we can run it into Monterey News as a monthly. Thing.
Oh, remind.
That's just always there, that, you know.
I mean, is it.
Well, you see it, well, you see it once, yeah, okay, it's, it's there. You see it every month. Starts to sink into these people.
I just wonder if it would be worth actually doing. Through that process and created that paragraph or whatever. Do you want mailing to all landowners on the private ways?
My, and, and my only opposition to that is there's so many varied credit ways and some have a very few owners and some have. I think there's gotta be some that have ever twenty, thirty owners on them. And with different levels of maintenance and different levels of passability. And it might not make sense to some private road owners where the roads are well maintained, well maintained. Why am I getting this letter?
But you just say, we recognize, like, please understand, we're sending this to all. People who live on private ways. We understand the difficulties, like I tried in that initial, the difficulties of maintaining a jointly owned road. And we know that some roads are well maintained. We just wanted to remind everybody who lives on this road, this is why it's important to maintain your road. This is what's gonna happen if the road isn't well maintained. Right, if you know you're maintaining your road, well, that's great, but if. There are betting a lot of the people that are on the roads that aren't well maintained, know the road isn't well maintained.
Yeah.
I, I doubt they think that, I doubt the people on West Road think that, that that road has, has been maintained.
And that is a little bit of an outlier in the problems that it's created.
True, although, you know.
Well, there's more.
Where that woman just got stuck a little while back. Um, right?
I, I don't think that that's a bad idea is to send something out, whether it's a mailing or, or just repetitive. Maybe it's not every month in the Monterey News, but certainly during the winter time when.
Reminder, roads are.
Especially if people are renting FBNBs. Or VRBOs or Airbnbs or whatever they call them.
I mean, from a liability standpoint, should the town, like, I realize people don't always read signs. But is it worth it from the town's standpoint to be putting signs that, at roads that aren't winter maintained by the residents? This is a private road, pass at your own risk. Like, our town liability ends here. If you go down this road, it's on you, blah blah.
It just, uh, it seems like a can of worms and somehow the system has kind of worked without major flaws.
Okay.
Where we maintain our public ways and sometimes. Uh. And, and, and some, for some reason, private people, if you go on a private property, you want a private property. But I'm certainly open to the idea of, increasingly open to the idea of. Two paragraphs reminding, people, if you live on a private road, the, the maintenance is your. Prox passive and if it's not maintained, your money's slow emergency response.
Know if it's a private road. Whose road is it?
It just, it's come up like three times since I've been on the board, which is.
Oh, it'll keep coming.
Wow, and it'll keep, that's why I'm saying like, you know, yeah, it's fine to say it, it worked, but.
With the intelligentsia going up.
How many more B and.
We're gonna get a lot more.
Airbnb people going down a road because the GPS sent them there and then suing the town. And we're like, yeah, that's not us, you gotta see them. Right, but I don't wanna be in that position if we can avoid it.
This one is gonna become more and more frequent.
Yeah.
So do you want me to try and redraft that letter to shorten it up and make it more specific to like, this could just slow down response time?
Yes, I love that. And, and, and just with the. With the tone that some people already maintain their private roads and, and some, sometimes they're not. Um, Mickey, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I really like that idea of sending letters because. More people are moving on to these roads, but it also should be mentioned that. Trees have to be cleared, you know, because some of these roads are, it's not just the surface, it's also the, the atmosphere.
The atmosphere, the passability of the road in general.
Yeah, and, and, and it's, you know, fire trucks are bigger than your real SUV.
Yeah, I think you focus it on the time, the, uh, time.
Where's the.
Response, it's probably the best way.
That, that's the, that's a good one to get, that gets them.
Because.
Just leave out the other.
You're not gonna get an ambulance there.
Did, did they deliver pizza?
No.
No.
Does anyone deliver pizza?
The Baldys.
Who did?
The Baldys.
All the way out here?
Well, here, I'm not here, I'm.
And Scott's right on paper.
This is true, twenty three.
Private drive.
Okay, that's that. Susan will work on that. Thank you, Susan. Um, town clerk appointment, Christopher Andrews.
Corrected, thank you. So he can't have two town clerks, so she should, he should actually be assistant town clerk. While Marie trains, which she's planning on staying through the elections.
Okay.
So Marie is our town clerk, not interim.
She is the interim town clerk.
Well, does that mean that we then can have this guy Andrews as the town clerk?
So I double checked with her after you wrote to me and she said that he should be the assistant town clerk.
Okay.
Until then.
Because I think, and I don't know how it works, but if we, well, we don't have to go too far.
Right.
We, we figured that.
So this gentleman is decided to become the next clerk. See, been for you guys at all? That'd be mad.
I do know him.
I have.
I had an interview for this specifically. He was here last week.
Who hires this person?
We hire him.
Right, so are we talking about hiring this guy before we? Appoint him? And meet with the guy and see what his qualifications are?
So I think.
I'm just curious, so it's what the process is.
Think that, as I understand the process, Marie and Melissa interviewed five candidates?
Okay, I.
Um, and of those are recommending Chris. I suspect that Chris would be fine with coming in. To meet with the board if you wanted.
I was just wondering how, how this.
No, that's what happened, I'm just recalling.
Spent through the, uh, process.
Um.
So it did, it went through the process.
I think with the exception of like the police chief before this, for the last couple of years, has been allowing me and the other departments to do these.
That's fine.
Recommendations.
You got it, that's your position.
Well, we did.
He did not get, it's also me.
So the board moved that?
The board did move, um, the board did approve the job description and post him.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, did you made a motion to?
I had not, um, but I would move that the board, and I mean, this is also, I mean, if you wanna meet with him, we're appointing him as assistant town clerk.
Yeah.
Um, but I would move that the board appoint as assistant town clerk, Christopher Andrews. And that's an indefinite in time period.
Do you, do either of you feel like you would like to meet with Chris about this before we make a term of appointment?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Obviously the guy, well, obviously, but I would assume he's qualified for the position. You guys met with him. He's got past experience.
No one that applied, has past clerk experience.
None.
For the clerk, or no municipal, or municipal. Um, the five candidates.
Has Mr. Shop been?
He did not apply and he told Marie he was not interested.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make certain that, that we give people that have given us, uh, a fair shake. So no, I would. Move second to your motion.
Second motion to appoint assistant town clerk, Christopher Andrews for an indefinite time period.
When would we, just as a thought, so we're appointing him to assistant and we would then. Appoint him, presumably, assuming he works out in an intervening time. When Marie leaves after the election, we would then come back and appoint him to clerk instead of assistant clerk.
Yes, presumably.
Okay.
I think.
Making sure I have the process.
Yes, it's just, I was thinking about it. I talked to Marie yesterday. I was glad to hear that she was willing to stay on because. This is a busier time of year with town meeting and town elections. And when she said she was willing to stay on, I was thinking about it, I'm thinking, if we appoint him as town clerk. Is Marie no longer town clerk? And at the end of the day, if something came down to. Whether or not there needed to be a recall or who's gonna sign and certify town meeting, then it's only one person to do it. And I think for right now, it probably makes sense to have Marie do it and Marie kind of agreed. To that, just as town clerk. So that's the reason behind assistant town clerk.
Awesome.
That, that's fine. I, I, and, and I just was confirming that at the end of Marie's tenure, we would then. Reconvene to, or we'd be key anyway, but convene to appoint him to clerk from assistant clerk.
Yeah. Mickey, yours.
Is there a process, you said nobody had experience, great. Is there a process for them to get the experience to?
So Marie is going to work with him, um, you know, like till now through that, and then there is also, I believe she said. Four opportunities every year, very consistent times of the year for conferences and trainings for clerks. So they'll allow the opportunity to go at all these, as well as the network of clerks that are around here to call upon.
I do know. Somebody just came in and they wanted, and what do we do?
And the state, right?
And the state, yes, I mean, they'll have a lot of places to.
Certainly. The Commonwealth.
And I just said, you know, and, and it should be.
Yeah, she's willing to suggest that, you know, he started making new books that do have, um, you know, something to go back and look on. Cause some things, you know, only happen once a year.
Like, yeah, almost, yeah. And it could be once in a lifetime.
Right.
It would have been great to have an experienced clerk apply, however.
Okay, I will call vote on motion to appoint assistant town clerk, Christopher Andrews. And yes, so it's unanimous. With approval. What's the? I think we could start him at twenty four and then with possible increases for becoming the town clerk and. Certification.
That within.
It's within recommended range.
Awesome. Didn't work for that.
He's a, he seems like a pretty sharp guy. I mean, I met him in other contexts. And, um, if he's willing to, you know, invest in the job and, and worth it, then I think that. We think considering getting him raises accordingly in the future.
Well, it never goes down.
This is true, but it can go up a little or it can go down a lot depending on someone's performance and, um, training.
It's a little amendment of budget, if you guys see that, but which figure should I use since you are allowing for a possible increase? Obviously not thirty five, that's only good.
Twenty eight upwards of that. Now, why wouldn't we give him more?
I mean, if I do twenty eight, if you don't put him up there, it allows for extra hours.
Yeah.
So.
At least we're covering our proverbial bucks.
Well, I also think, uh, based on going down to the basement. I don't think more town clerk hours would hurt with records, because ultimately they are in charge of the records. And even if someone else is hired to help them, they need to be managing records, storage and maintenance. So I don't think more. Could hurt.
Just learning the job initially made up for the thousands. The other thing is, do we need to? Do we have money currently in the budget or do we need to put more there to cover training? Because if we were hiring someone that doesn't have the kind of experience and we're acknowledging that that person needs to get trained. What we need, some numbers that you, you said you were gonna talk to Marie.
And the topic on Tuesday, um.
We, we need to consider that we need to make sure we've adequately funded. The ability of that person to get training since we want that training.
Cause right next, next year, right now, there's only five hundred dollars for professional development and I imagine that the courses are gonna be a little more than that.
And is this, are we talking certification or?
Certification you wouldn't be eligible for for three years, cause Marie said you have to take. You have to meet all the requirements of the courses, which would happen over the three year time agreement, then you have to take a three hundred question test.
Okay, so certification is not anywhere in the near future?
Not, it's a process.
Okay, understood, I didn't know that.
So I will get back to you next week on if the professional development and business travel needs to increase, which I suspect will be. I'm just going to find what is, sorry.
Ah, yeah, motion to, uh, start the town clerk at a rate of twenty four dollars an hour.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? There will be no call vote.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval. The next thing is the solar consulting agreement. So the consulting agreement me- mentioned a steering committee. And it's become apparent that the steering committee would be another appointed committee. In addition to renewable energy working group. And Peter Merkett, who chairs the renewable energy working group, thinks that the steering committee, that the renewable energy working group can serve as the steering committee. And we do not need to appoint an additional committee. I agree with him.
Yeah, me too, yeah.
Yeah. Susan, do you have an item?
Yeah, I just wanted us to, uh. Approve her, the ability of the human resource director to speak to town council. Regarding our proposed permanent sit time policy for part time employees.
Yeah, I'll recuse myself on that, but go home.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a yes, unanimous.
Vote not with me.
Yeah, right. Susan and Scott, yes, and Justin, which is.
Okay, we're cruising here. Now onto town minister, your favorites.
I know I emailed you, I'm assuming you're aware that on highlight board, um, gave their notice, next Friday will be the last day. Um, I will put something in the paper, I just didn't wanna do it until I officially talk to you. We have actually gotten. Two applications already, but Jim put something out on Facebook, on his Facebook page, so. And the transfer decision person is.
Starting Wednesday.
Which is also, we are interviewing another candidate this Friday. And the other item is.
Fortune dollar licenses?
Yes.
It's so.
So. The fee for each license grant under this section shall be two dollars.
No, it says two dollars, but not greater than fifty.
So why not make it two?
Because really, why not, why?
I would move to set fortune dollar licenses at two dollars.
Second.
Any discussion on that? There will be no call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous.
I'm sorry, this is too much for me.
Now, is that per license or?
Per license.
Per that?
Per license.
For person they talked to, yeah, per license.
And then I just need, I've been made aware that the snow ice overtime, not, not the. Some snow ice project, uh, due to drawing over the next payroll, so you just declare a snow emergency, which will allow you to overspend.
I declare. You declare, Scott, what's your, what are you declaring?
Snow emergency, second come down. Unbelievable. Oh, what happens, that happens almost every year, I remember.
We actually have it for like the last four or five.
Wow, well, what's getting is this?
Yeah, the back and forth, like freestyle.
Actually needs a motion, doesn't it?
Yeah. Is that a motion?
I was making a motion, you need to make a motion. No, yeah, I, I think that it needs to be mo- moved.
Are you, are you sure how move to, uh, to declare snow emergency?
Oh, second.
We got second.
Any other discussion on that, fine motion?
There being no call vote?
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval, unanimous declaration.
And I did handwrite in the ComCom funds for the trail and ballpark, but I don't know if you want to, I, I was going to talk with Steve and Endwell first, and then come back to you guys or something, but it sounds like from council that their fund that they have set aside can definitely be used for the training that they are proposing. I think it might be able to be used on the ballpark as well.
For the resurfacing of the ballpark.
But then ComCom has to approve the uses, they have to say, yes, we'll give you our money, but.
I mean, first we had to establish whether it was possible for us to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. How much does that?
Uh, it's like forty thousand.
And where did that go?
It came from the fine, I can't know what road it was, but they kept on with.
Yeah.
Kurters, Road, Eaton Road.
Was it Eaton?
Yeah. San Sefters.
I can't remember the name of the gentleman, he was such a nice guy. You don't have to.
That was it for me.
Yeah.
Male correspondent, so good Republican Town Caucus call, that's just the formality, we're being notified, it's on Saturday, March eleventh, but it is at one thirty PM at the Monterey Library.
Has there been any whisper or news concerning when the digital.
Phone, so. I think the whisper was in the Monterey news.
Yes, okay. And I, I was like, I didn't catch it in there.
Let's see what we got here. We don't. Um, I do have a, an item of unanticipated business, but before we get into that, are there comments and questions from the public? Okay. Uh, the one item of unanticipated business I have, and I'm also skipping the minutes, but we dealt with the Lake Arthur Warren letter, is the Southern Berkshire Volunteer Ambulance Service reached out, and they're holding another meeting on Tuesday, next Tuesday, March fourteenth at six PM.
Which I think I had mentioned when I originally gave you the briefing.
Oh.
Right, it's next.
I thought this was a new.
No, it's, they're just writing a letter to tell about the meeting they had already set for the last meeting, that I was already on my calendar. I sent him a note saying I was planning to go, and, um, one additional thing I thought of that I want to put forward at that meeting, and I, I started collecting some figures off DLS, is that, um, the schools using the just property values is based on the fact that all the kids are children of residence. But towns actually have other sources of income, in some cases more than others, and, you know, s- some of the towns have significant income coming from commercial enterprises, which are paying various types of commercial taxes. And, um, you know, Great Barrington is making the argument that many of the nine-one-one calls, ambulances calls that they get serviced of the thirteen-hundred compared to our seventy, are non-Barrington residents. However, I'm guessing the majority of those calls, with some exceptions, are people that are in Barrington, either in a nursing home, which is a commercial enterprise, at Butter Nut, which is a commercial enterprise, or at some other business-related thing. Not all of them, but probably majority, I'm sure there are people that are in car accidents, for example, that have, are none of those things. But I just was getting some figures off the DLS website to confirm that their revenue stream is different than ours from Mount Washington's or Allford's. Um, and that I think it's important to include that when they're coming up with a a formula for how the different towns should be apportioned to support the.
Didn't you give them that little titty bit of information last week, and they kind of looked at you and said, well, this is your bill?
They, I, I think the last time when I talked with them about it, I had come up with a a scheme based on number of trips, right, a, a payment issue based on how much service there was.
Yeah.
And the mileage, um, and their response was that it's about readiness and not about cost. Like, it's a, it's a fee for service, but you're paying us to have the staff, the personnel, and the equipment to be ready to go, it's not about the number of costs, so.
I think if you read between the lines, the assessment methodology is just that they just want that amount of money from us.
I think that may be true, but I think that, like, all I can.
Yeah, but I don't get, I don't get it, it's like, why? Why are we scapegoating?
I think because it's a readily available method of assessment that's used for schools, but I don't think it's appropriate for this.
I don't either.
Uh, right, and so I'm trying to find a, it's not going to change it for this year, it's not going to change it for this year.
Yeah, no, I. I, I like the, the avenue you're using, but I, that's what I'm afraid of, is that they've made up their minds,
I think they know.
And basically, they've already said, you know, you pay the paper, or you get your own service.
And it's not for, I don't think it's going to change anything for this year.
Yeah.
Right, I think the purpose of this conversation is about how do we come to a fair assessment going forward that's sustainable.
Right.
And reasonable, and I think at that point, it's reasonable to say, look, we don't think this is actually applicable. We're paying it because we want the service, but.
I think once you pay it because you want the service.
Maybe.
The trap sprung, you know, you're in it.
Maybe, but I don't think it hurts to have the conversation, and maybe th- there won't be the support for it.
Well, what if we just give thirty-five out of fifty-two, or whatever they ask for, so that's it?
I think you know the answer to that.
What, are we not going to get any service now?
Yeah, they're going to return the thirty-five and say, this was our fee, and, and we're not serving it.
Really?
I doubt, because the, it's like where it used to do that, right, Melissa?
What the?
Pay less than they were asked?
When they first asked, yeah.
Yeah.
They asked originally like nineteen thousand or something, they gave.
And not even, I mean, I remember, in fact, in like six thousand.
But they didn't, it wasn't prepared quite like this was.
I think there's two things going on, one is that we're paying more than our fair share compared to the other towns involved. And the second thing is that fifty thousand dollars is cheap for what we're getting.
Back to mouthful. We're paying too much, but it's actually less than.
We're paying too much compared to the other five towns involved, so that Berkshire, but if we were to go off on our own, yeah, still a good deal.
So it's hard to.
How much can you complain?
It's hard to argue that.
It is, but I, I still think it's worth saying that we, we are recognizing that they are not being fair.
Yeah.
We're paying it, but it isn't right.
Yeah. I think that, I, that's important to do.
And I, I don't expect to win, but I still think it's important to, like, be on the record for, like, I, we're paying this, but we still recognize it not being fair.
Right, no, that's great.
Not at all. Do we want to tackle minutes, do we have?
All right, and for kind and for how, we should at least do the old one.
Yeah.
Add a snack before it came up. Leftovers are an awesome thing.
I'm leaving, I'll let you do your minutes.
Good for you.
I must be having a second one.
It's only going to be a few minutes, Nick.
A few minutes, sure.
That's okay.
A few minutes.
All right.
Two, we're two twenty-two then? Yes, you sent them to me early, I.
I know.
In color.
I know. Do you have more?
Like, oh, you know what, I'm sorry, I kept your file, I gave you my. I'm so sorry.
That's why.
I was wondering why my agenda didn't have my hat marked on, and I was like, I must have done.
I was wondering, Melissa, that portion tell the license was for me.
No, I kept saying you should know how it, how come it was going to come out, right?
Do you want it to be a fortune total?
No, I don't want to know it.
No, but you're not the only person that asked if that was for me.
I thought you had all the cards, you had the card.
Oh, right, because of my, yes, no, not yet, I'm not that good yet.
That's why I thought.
Yeah, no, sure.
Good night.
Good night. What do you see under new business one? Do you have some movies speak?
Yeah. Yeah, I tried to hang up, but I couldn't figure out who was saying what.
Why don't we just go with the orange version, like number one, if everyone is okay with that?
Where's the video, it's my word, so.
Yeah, that seems fine. But we should keep in, I mean, is a tractor voted, right?
I, I think we have to keep tractor out of it. Yeah, that, that was my recommendation, that Jim kept correcting us to make sure that it would be fit under chapter ninety, so I think we want tractor out of it.
Um, in three, I feel like if, if we're crossing, just to clarify the process, we probably should, should we delete the, the line, should I put after it too? Or do you want to say Justin asked it as by law of law, or that? Do you see where I'm going now?
Uh.
They blew in the middle there.
Susan explained the process. Now, we've voted on the short-term, remember, that's approved at town meeting, the state would collect the funds from the, and the town would receive a quarterly check from the state.
But then, then that next sentence, you want to just say Justin asked?
No.
Or just? Sure. Ooh. I think this should be the second paragraph, the part, um, under three that's actually about SDAS. It probably, it should be they maintain, not they maintain, in that first orange sentence.
Yeah.
So I think you've got the one that we're.
Sure.
Keeping. You okay with that stuff in that other?
I am, yeah, I mean, there was a little changes.
Yeah.
I just leave it for stuff.
No problem. Is green both of us?
No, I feel like what's up here in two ten or two?
Uh, yeah. I just, I'm not sure where'd you get it, this.
No, I moved it.
Oh, you just moved it, okay, no. No, you just said it was green, that's all you read.
The green is, it's not changed its mood.
I know.
Which the system's actually pretty smart.
Can't figure out what did that. I, I'm impressed, actually.
But as horrible as it is sometimes, once in a while, there's something that makes sense.
Unexpected. Okay.
So we had a shift to use multiple. I would move to approve the minutes of February twenty-second, as amended.
Twenty-second.
Any discussion, if you know, call vote?
Yes.
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 All right, so that is the thing. The next one is the last day of February.
Like the jump one, right?
That shot was in that.
Okay, if there's green, he's right, it isn't blue.
Projects. We had to deal with this, Michelle. I had Michelle question whether there was adequate planning prior to determining the reasoning for requesting ninety-eight thousand dollars for the play in renovation. And you have Michelle suggesting whether deciding the project a hundred thousand dollars, it may not be sensible, solicit.
It might be sensible. Might it not be sensible is probably what I was going for, but it might be sensible, it shouldn't say not.
Yes, so I'll get rid of the not, and then I'll say that we're going.
And I'm okay with either one, okay.
We'll go with orange. Not blue.
Okay. I don't know how I didn't catch it, I think I must have changed the wording and let the word in.
And the next paragraph, I think it should start, Justin noted the various line items for the fiscal year twenty-four per commission budget.
Go fit, make it so that it's clear, cause I, I can see that being hard to.
Yeah.
To choose, cause it's words from different people.
So here, let me see, I think most agencies will, I'm changing this, but, um, Jerry reported that he has reached out to Porcy Land Services to help them raise the proposal for bid football field repair. We just need to get rid of that.
Okay. Yep.
Looks good to me.
Motion approves, February twenty-eighth as amended.
Second.
Call vote?
Yes.
Yes. Two yes votes.
Are we doing it? Are we staying up to date? We're on a roll.
And so just to clarify, cause I see it's the first thing from here, so that special article for the tandem axle is just a carryover from, from when it was initially approved as a special article for, because that was only three years ago, or something, two or three years ago. That's why it says tandem axle zero.
Right.
That service was only started paying.
Gotcha, I just, it was just, I wanted to make sure that I was correct, and I was, I thought it was a tandem axle, and I'm like, there's that zero, but now you clarified that, but it said some departmental equipment, and I thought it would be better to have what actually is the equipment in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's just make sure it's the right one and I'm good with it.
I knew when he said I'll get it to you Tuesday, we were not gonna.
I know, it seemed too quick. It usually takes them two weeks to get it.
Well, that's, I sent.
Do you need to clarify who Sarah is?
Hunter.
I know that, but I'm just saying, do they need to say Sarah Hunter, town account?
It says treasurer, Sarah Hunter there.
Where? Up here. Where are you looking? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's always like the first time getting.
Yeah, yeah. No problem.
Who's first?
I didn't realize. I guess she had been on there, but she never said anything, so.
No, she actually didn't sign that. She was at another meeting.
Oh, okay. She wasn't actually present, but okay. Okay, I like it.
So here, I think actually it's a small one, but I did notice, uh, so I, it actually is, he, he said he's gonna have a select order.
I actually listened to it.
He said he's gonna have, well, then, then it's to Sarah the treasurer.
Okay.
Not the.
Not the accountant. I actually listened to it.
I don't think I have to listen to something to do minutes and so long. I listened to this to get these numbers.
I think, I think he said Sarah and I, I thought it was accountant and not treasurer, so that was my bad, but he did not say select order.
Yeah. Well, and, but by the transit property, he was gonna get it to Sarah, who's gonna get it to us.
Right. But that if he got it to her, doesn't mean we were dead to us and die, right? Okay. Are you okay with this substitution?
Yeah. Uh, and then the warrant articles. They just created or drafted. We can just go with drafted.
Uh, yeah, I'm fine with either one. I don't care. The thing you said earlier with the revised budget, which I bet that looked like it was library budget numbers.
No, no, I was, yes, that was the ones he sent with the first time you had, so I was just part ten.
Forwarding it to you.
Sick leave, not holiday. So I was sick. I did ask him. I did ask him, but I didn't get it back either, so I wasn't sure.
So those numbers still need to be updated.
Right, okay.
Where did the green get me to?
Unintelligible.
Oh, unintelligible, okay.
I mean, I think I, yeah, it was kinda, we have so many different water.
Oh, so.
Management grants.
So this raised one interesting issue that I thought was worth mentioning was that um sometimes the, in the meeting where we met first with Jim, and I, I should have raised this earlier. What was that, the previous one on the twenty-second? Was that the twenty-second? Yes. Okay, so um, it's a, it's kind of like, I'll say like a matter of, I'll see, I don't know. But um, I think for me, when you're writing minutes, the minutes should reflect what actually happened in the order they happened in the meeting. I understand that sometimes they're elsewhere on the agenda. But if you have a conversation with a person and you cover four topics and one of those topics was elsewhere on the agenda, you don't take that out of the context of the conversation and put it down after two other topics? Because in reality, the minutes are supposed to reflect what actually happened, not what you proposed was gonna happen.
Yes.
Right? So I kind, I like, I don't think we need to change this. This is a matter of how we should do them going forward. Like, so I feel like the, like when we talked about the chapter ninety thing here. Um, so the chapter ninety funds for the loader.
Yes.
Got separated by two items from that original conversation.
Yes.
With Jim. And that would be an example where that actually didn't happen here.
Yeah.
It, it happened, it happened here, not there.
I think you are, I think you are correct.
I, I know I'm correct, because in order to correct it, I had to go re-watch the minutes.
No, no, I'm not saying.
I'm so confused about that.
I'm not, I'm not saying I can get it correct about when that happened. I think, I think you're probably right about the way to do it. Um, I wish also, one thing that we've had a lot recently, for better or worse, is like, we had Dennis and Steve in here and then we had Mary and Lori in here. I don't know why this happened so much recently, but you deal with something about the budget. Maybe it's cuz we're in budget season. You deal with one thing and then you wanna talk about budget thing. And so, yeah, you end up with these separate, and in theory, when we're making the agenda, I could try and identify when that's gonna happen and get that better.
It's never gonna be perfect, though.
So, but yeah.
I, I don't think you should be that hard on yourself. I think that as long as the items are on the agenda, it's completely reasonable. We're allowed to reorganize.
We are.
And it's completely reasonable if people are in the room to talk about them when the people are here.
Yeah.
And I think it's, it's okay for those things not to have a one-to-one match. And I, what I think the most important thing is that the meeting is that the minutes are the official record of what happened, and I think it's a good policy to have them reflect what actually happened in the meeting in the order they actually happened. Even if that is a different order than the agenda.
Yes, I think you're, I think you're right.
Okay.
Laura, did you catch that?
Um, so anyway, it just made me think of it, so I wanted to raise it before I forgot.
Since that time, I also came, came up out of private rooms. I just added that to a document used at the meeting.
Okay, no problem.
And then we had Steve, that little word choice and treasurer, and other than that.
That looks good.
Motion approved, March first as amended.
Second.
Call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
That.
And yes, that's three yeses and.
Yay.
Um, I make a motion to adjourn.
Um, can we put on next week's agenda? Just if the planning board is responsible for putting some things on the warrant and that doesn't happen, is there like, I'm concerned that there is something that I certain should be there and I don't, I haven't heard a peep from them. And I'm just wondering whether we should have discussion about how to fix that.
Yeah.
Because I think they need to happen, and if they're not willing to do them, they need to happen another way. And I would like to talk about how we would like to proceed with it. Do we wanna send them?
Can you, I mean, I, I wonder if
you're cons, you're concerned about what another board is or isn't putting on the war?
Uh, and well, the question, I'm concerned about the fact that we have some problems with the zoning bylaws. That the, that the planning board is responsible for taking care of. And I'm concerned that despite the fact that I on at the planning board chair request work with Donna to work out what needed to be done. And despite the fact that I repeatedly communicated that to them, both verbally and multiple times at writing, it still isn't, doesn't appear to be going forward. And the re- the remedy that was given to us by Donna hasn't been pursued. And I am concerned about that, because I think if we, we have a responsibility, if we know that we have a problem, to fix the problem. And if the planning board isn't fixing it, what is the recourse? Do we?
Well, we can't, I was zoning, we can't do zoning, right?
No, but we can ask members of set board to explain their inactions.
Yeah.
Um. That's really the course, I can put it on the agenda.
Okay. I mean, do we wanna extend an invitation to the planning board to come and talk to us about, I mean, maybe if it's in this room with all of us and they're explaining what their plan is.
Well, I, I wanna make sure where we are all, or we should have a discussion first about where we're at.
Okay, they, they may have a plan.
Yeah.
Maybe they have a plan and the fact that they didn't communicate to us doesn't matter, right? As long as they have a plan, but.
It, it could be a letter that, that you just draft at time to say, hey, these are concerns. Are you planning this to be put on the war?
How many times can you tell somebody?
You've done that.
Yeah.
Did you attend the meeting?
I, which maybe.
What were they discussing?
Uh.
Back. No, just because they're recent ones, cuz she's gonna take in their minutes and maybe she might know if they.
Has it, like, that I can look at their minutes? All I know is that to best of information, believe the action that needs to happen has not occurred according to Marie the other day. So. Talk is cheap. I'm looking for action.
Oh, yeah, it'll be on the psych work agenda.
I mean, I don't wanna be a pain in the butt.
I'm not, I'm not. I'm not very.
But I am a pain.
I think I, I think I know vaguely what you're talking about, but I'm, I'd have to freshen up on the details.
It's a good pain.
Thank you. I'm good paid.
Well, I mean, you bring up a whole lot of topics that
Oh.
need to be discussed.
Just as an FYI, I have an appointment scheduled with Senator Pinn Kelly in a few weeks. I forget the date. It's a Friday. And I, I think like two weeks from Friday to talk about housing issues in South County and what might be on this legislature's agenda for landlord rights to try to help ease the rental problem and just other options available. Like that, I don't know what'll come up, but I was just letting you guys know that I'm gonna go talk to somebody. So you have to say. Not that I think we can look to the state, to the Commonwealth to solve all our problems, but.
Yeah, very few.
True.
But he's, he's always good to talk to. He's a pretty cool dude.
And if enough people are talking to him, he may be able to connect me with other people in all the towns that are working on these issues. And there might be, and you know, it is a statewide problem. And everybody knows what the problem is, so maybe they'll be putting forward some things that might help. I don't know.
It all comes down to funding and space. And we have the space, just don't know how to fund it.
That particular one also has to do with how um. Yeah, sorry, I said you almost.
We can talk about it.
I was just letting you guys know that I was gonna.
No, we didn't.
Oh, we did.
Is there a term?
Yeah, second.
Uh, vote to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, meeting adjourned at eight twenty-five PM.